We will promise that the Ohio High Point is ready for this thing to order. No complaints.
Here.
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 Donna.
Here.
But love.
Here.
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 Purcell.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Savick.
Here.
Walinton Wright, can you say here?
Here.
Brian's here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to everybody. It's so nice to meet all that. Been a long process. So, on your comments and communications, any suggestions?
We have Nate from WPKO. We have Foster Wolf on the Bell Fountain Examiner Online. We have our attorney, Chris McCloskey. Did I say anywhere close?
Yeah.
Okay. And I don't know who you brought with you, Chris. So, okay. And so we have them back. And we have administrators in the House and online viewing this meeting. Yes, so I have quite a few updates for you today. One, there's textbooks on the back if you want to look at those. There is construction documents back here on these tables. If you want to look at the DD drawings that were done in June. But I want to talk to you a little bit about reopening. As most of you from your district, we know we are all waiting for what the governor tells us and the plan. I have been on numerous meetings with every county. We have, of course, five counties, five county health departments, 14 different school districts, all kind of trying to design their own plan for health department approval. I will tell you, most of them are being designed by the counties. So the county schools are trying to work together and different things like that in developing those type of plans. But, but all that being said, we have started working on four options here. Everything from trying to come back to school as normal to full online to hybrid ideas. And what might possibly work for us, you know, especially if all of a sudden one county peaks and shuts down those five schools and we still have. And so we're exploring all those different types of possibilities. That's what the admin team's been working on. Tonight, you'll see something in the agenda for blended learning. This doesn't require board approval, but I put it on there. It's a one-page application to the state right now for being able to do blended learning. It was previously already in the law that other people use for some innovative pilots like Butler Tech and different types of things to have no school on Friday, but to have different work-based ideas. And so we're going to submit that tomorrow. And then there's another form that they want us to that just came out. I don't know. I'm stealing Paul's thunder, but House Bill 164 was signed. Part of that has to do with also blended learning models for this upcoming school year so that we don't lose count of things like school hours if we have kids working at home on a blended model and it doesn't impact our funding if we don't meet all the hour requirements that are currently in law. So those are just some of the things we're trying to reopen. I hope to have a solid plan before you at the July board meeting because we'll need to start communicating with parents and things of that nature about the plan and how we intend to roll things out and the schedule and what those type of things look at, look like. Many districts in our, in our 14, at least I know a handful, are looking at even moving their calendar back a little bit, especially if the blended learning model requires that you don't have to count hours to give teacher training. This is going to be, this is going to be different than what it was when we just kind of made things work when it was thrown to us last March. We're now looking at a model that could be how we operate all year long. And so things that we have learned where last year web exams and things like that were excused or we didn't have to do end-of-course exams, those are expected to come back. So we're going to have to get a year's worth of curriculum back into working with students in some type of model that doesn't have us possibly with them every day as many hours as we always had them. And so all those things are being, there's a push. I went through the 11-page document in the career tech for reopening. It hasn't been released, but I was on a meeting Tuesday afternoon. And, you know, they're looking at things like flexibility and more work-study hours for students in career tech to be able to get hands-on experience on the job side and different types of things to try to expand those ideas. And though some of that works for us, there's also businesses because of this that have said, oh, well, we don't want students in our, in our business and different types of things like that. And then other businesses are laying off people, you know. And so where we used to have partnerships, they're not even having all their regular employees in. So, you know, that, that will be a difficult thing, but we're looking at all those issues, including we've interviewed the number of subs that will come back. And right now, that number is low. And if you know, most of the subpopulation typically is an older population that retire or come back into subbing or some that just want to get into subbing that are, that are young, trying to get their foot in the door. And so just in the beginning conversations with the subs, you know, so we might have to have a cut number where we know if so many staff were to come down ill, then what's our plan? So we are looking at models that would allow us to possibly not do the roller coaster, but try to pick a model of ideas that we think maybe we could consistently do all year, even if something happens in another county or something of that nature. But it involves a lot around transportation and what really comes out about transportation. Where our partner districts, you know, they're still required to transport here, but they don't necessarily have to if they're not transporting anywhere in the county. If they're not picking up anyone, you know, and we stay open. So a lot of things to work through with your partner school superintendents. If I had to give you anything to take back to your partner schools, I would really encourage them to find ways to be able to transport students here. You know, they don't have to pick them up, but typically when our calendars don't match, you might know that as long as the student gets to the high school, they're able to catch a bus and get down to here. And so if we're able to remain open, especially for labs or other types of things, or, you know, 33% of our students between 20 and 33 are special ed. So trying to get them with someone that can give them added help and support is important. You know, if we can at least maintain, even when things don't look like normal for everyone, that they would still provide transportation to the career center. That would be something I would ask you to emphasize with your, your districts. And I'll be emphasizing with all the superintendents in any upcoming meeting. Is there any questions that I can kind of open, talk about a little bit with the reopening of school?
Dr. Smith?
Sure.
Just for clarification, when you're talking about transportation to Ohio High Point from the partner schools, are you meaning like if Kenton would not be in session, but Ohio High Point would?
Correct. So let's just say Harden.
Normally that didn't.
Correct. Nor, nor, so here, so here's a standard scenario, Mrs. Purcell. If, if Kenton was on a teacher workday and all the students were not there, but Ohio High Point was still in session, there was a bus that would still run down here for those students that got to the high school. Okay? But if Kenton has to close school for three months, three weeks because there's been a spike in Harden County on the COVID virus, if they're not transporting anywhere or picking up, then they don't have to, we think, by wall, transport to us. And so, but if we still have 10, 10 other schools in other counties and we can still stay open, it would be nice if those kids, you know, still whatever the protocol might be for mask or social distancing on the bus, those type of things. Most of them aren't bringing full buses to us so they can spread them out and things like that on, on there. And so that would just be our emphasis to try to see if there's a way to work. And very well, the health, local health department can say, no busing at all and just shut it down automatically. It sounds like local health departments will have most of the control. But, but that's something we would just emphasize, like, because it's going to be hard for us to plan for 14 and have pockets be doing this and pockets and stuff like that. So we hope to at least find a model that we think most of the group would agree to and still be able to bus our kids. And because the hardest part for us is, of course, doing the hands-on learning. It's hard to do a phobotomy stick online, you know, it's hard to cut hair and stuff like that. So what we have heard is when things come out, that it will likely, for career centers, be following the industry standard that's set up for opening of other companies. And so my example would be, you know, you go right now to any type of cosmetology, hairdresser thing, they have to wear masks in working with you. So our cos kids cutting hair would have to wear masks. Or our food service kids, when cutting and stuff, would still have to wear masks like food service does in the way it is now. But welders, they don't put a mask underneath their hood and wear a mask when they're welding. So by that industry standard, they wouldn't need to wear a mask in their lab for welding and those type of things. Maybe if they're working in groups on a project at a table, you know, or they're close together, we would put the kids to wear a mask, but not just, you know, in the normal industry standard of what those type of things are. So as different businesses and construction and electricity and, you know, those type of things have opened up or office protocols or things, they are asking that career centers try to model the protocol that's been set for the business world for our students, for real-world example. And so those are some of the things that we've been hearing, as well as CTSO. You know, how's that going to work? We have all these career service organizations. It's part of our curriculum, really. It's a, it's a co-curricular activity. It's not just an extracurricular activity. It's really part of what we do with our curriculum. And so they said, hopefully in August, they'll be able to tell us what some of those associations like BPA and HOSA and Skills USA are planning to do next year and how they have been looking at developing some online competitions, as well as will they see any chance to get back together with different protocols in place or things of that nature. So we hope to hear some of that as well. Yeah.
You stated that you've been on these five different conversations with health departments and other schools. Or my question is, if, how much help can we expect from the local health departments? If, say, somebody gets sick in determining whether it's COVID or not?
Well, everyone has their protocols. If they go to the doctor, then it's reported to the health department. The health department will, you know, be looking at, at, at schools and different places as to if they're tracking where that might have come from or who they might have been in contact with. That's why we're looking at protocols like assigned seating in classrooms and assigned seating in the lunchroom so we can identify if this student was sick, who they might have been next to, if, if the, if the health department needs to notify any of them or that type of stuff. I would say, I have personally phone called with three health departments. I've emailed with one. And I've talked to the superintendent in all ways, but I haven't talked to the all-gays health department directly. And they all seem, you know, at, at various levels of working with the school districts and trying to, you know, we all have to submit a plan to them as part of the protocol for them to buy off on a local plan. And depending on what ODH says and what the governor's office says about how health departments are supposed to look at the different protocols, you know. So for example, you know, mask and social distancing for school reopening is not required. It's requested by the CDC if feasible. So there's places where, you know, it might not be feasible for us to make perfect social distancing type ideas. But we'll still try our best to accommodate those rules as best as we possibly can as well. So those local health departments will have a lot of say in the plans moving forward. One county has submitted a plan and the local health department says, right now, they'll review it, but they're waiting for the governor to come out with his directives. And in the last 24 hours, I've heard everything that the governor's plan is coming out by the end of the week. And I heard somebody say the governor said yesterday at his press conference, it'd be at least another week before the plan came out. So, and that was after he said two weeks ago, it'd be 10 days and we're already like on day nine. So, so I'm not exactly sure where that stands, but we're all kind of on hold to, to make sure, I think ODE, who had their plan ready, is in alignment with what the governor's office and ODH and if they need to make any changes before they send it out to school districts. And like I said, I've, I've seen the draft of the 11-page document specifically for career tech, but they're not releasing that until the whole plan is, is released. Any other questions?
Yes. So, the land paperwork to be a blended learning, does that have any permanency to it? Or are you going to rename it to the following year when it's all over? And are there specific requirements of the blended learning model?
So yes and no. Okay. So the paperwork that I'm submitting next week seemed like it was a very open-ended, once you put it in, your district became a blended learning model by the law. Okay? House Bill 164 lists this criteria of a plan that the districts have to submit before July 31st. It kind of about how you're going to do some of your education of kids, what's some of your ideas for assessment of students and stuff like that. And so you have to write an actual plan, which once again, isn't approved by ODE and isn't approved by the board. I just have to submit the plan. And then that gives us one year of those ideas of, of not being penalized by hours or different types of things. So, you know, as I, as I can tell you, a couple of districts have been doing the blended learning model across the state and different ideas for the last two years because it was already part of the law somewhere else. And so I, I don't know if this will then be able to carry on to other years or if we'll have to submit a plan each year or if they'll change it after House Bill 164 and put another one in for, for depending if it goes longer. But right now, it's kind of a no vote on plan, but submit a plan with more details based on House Bill 164. Okay? Anything there? So hopefully those online can see what I have placed up here. I want to talk a little bit about construction update as well with you. And sorry, I'm taking a little longer tonight, but just kind of want to give you a brief update of where we are on some of the things is that we have reviewed the construction timeline that has presented, been presented to us by Marker. And it goes very much from, we just talked about maybe doing some early site work where there would be a construction drive and some of the buildings that we knew were coming down would be removed and they would have a staging area for some of the work on the new section of possibly starting as early as in October. And then new construction would begin somewhere around February till around January of the following year. Then we would move as many people into the new construction area and start the renovation project from May 21st all the way, sorry, to August 22nd. So that should, that's a typo there. So, but then we would be doing everything from working in the automotive tech wing to doing the heart transplant with all the mechanical rooms, starting in May. And so some of these things like blended learning would allow us to, to give areas over and maybe go to just online for the last two weeks of school or something of that nature to keep the construction project moving and stuff of that nature as well. So, so we see this as benefits of not having to shuffle rooms or not having as much chaos in some of those ideas. But, but that's kind of the general timeline. And we've actually modified some of these dates and starting a week later and giving away another week in the calendar. But in general, that's the, the timeline of which Marker submitted and that we've been looking over and believe that we can accommodate the areas to keep it on being somewhere between a 19 and 21-month type of project, depending on alternates or things that are taken. And so the other thing that I want you to see is our first attempt at setting the alternates. You, of course, would have to approve the alternates that we take. And we don't necessarily believe we'll get all six of the alternates, but we have around 21 alternates on the idea. Some of them are given alternates where we know we're going to want to take certain operating systems and things that we currently have in the building. And so we match that and we don't have two operating systems. So there's some like that, but there's also a laundry list of ones of what we've tried to say could be an alternate and prioritize. And so we'll go through that list with the F and G committee for the DD page turn. There might even be some additional ones by the DD page turn, which means this is, like I said, only a draft, but so Chris and I can kind of start talking the next meeting with the team. These are some of the priorities and, and I just want to kind of go through with you how they were designed or thought about. The sanitary lift station is a regular low cost, but it is a pump that's over 45 years old. And so we made that the first priority. And then the next three, whether it's student center, tech wing, conference center, why that kind of took place and why student service center became the second priority was, the idea is if the project was to come in under budget or we had more in the contingency at the end or those type of things, we could always go back and possibly add the diesel lab or something at the end or have another project on the outside of the building where that was. But it's unlikely we're going to come back in and do internal work again, you know. And so the internal work and the internal timeline. And, and so once again, student services with almost over 30% of our kids always being in special ed, they really felt like that space and offices and, and having bigger areas for nursing, you know, clinic and stuff like that for what we do here was a higher priority of the administrative team versus the addition of just the diesel lab. And it's also a difference weight in cost as to, we think we'll probably maybe, you know, bids came in well, we would probably be able to maybe get the second or third alternate based on how they're priced right now. The diesel lab is the most expensive alternate, you know. And so being very high cost and things like that, it would really have to come in well with how the budget's been working and stuff right now to us to even think about that alternate being able to be taken. So, so that was kind of the concept of the list. I just wanted you to see it here tonight. And if you have questions, as you look at DD or you come back July 13th, as we make kind of final modifications on DD and kind of better select really what our alternates are, have that conversation at that time. I just wanted you to see the work that the administrative team has been doing, putting these things together as we've been talking with the construction groups. Any questions on that part? Okay. So the last one I have is still right here. And this is, once again, I don't want to keep delaying this and it could be another part of the meeting because I don't necessarily want to rush it either. But we talked about talking about these questions. And I know we have executive sessions with the attorney and, and different things on the agenda tonight. And so it's really about, does the board want to go through these questions at this time? Would the board like, once again, to, to do it at a, a future meeting? Where maybe we don't have an executive session or other things planned. But I wanted to at least give the opportunity, we had talked about last meeting, doing this. But I really want us to be able to discuss these questions and invest the time into it too. So kind of want to know if they wanted to be part of the update or, once again, delay to a future meeting. Okay. Well, you have them posted in your area from last month. They should be there as well. And so, and so once again, looking over the themes, you'll, when you find out of my evaluation, you'll see that COVID blew my evaluation up as, as being able to get to some of the goals. And so this was part of the strategic planning idea that we were working together as a group. So, once again, take that, I guess, into consideration that that was part of what we did to hear from the board in a different manner in small group discussion, as well as try to be building some information that we could help turn over to our strategic planning committee and facilitators with this information as well, as far as moving forward in our next plan. So that was a part of what the goal was. Stop sharing. Where's the stop sharing button? Is everybody with me online still? Anyone can answer.
Yep.
I'm still here.
Okay. Did you guys see the last presentation or was it completely dark to you?
We didn't see it.
Okay. Okay. So good, we're not discussing that anyway. So great. I didn't, I didn't show it up. Okay, Madam President, I believe the last thing I have is there will be no packets for the next two weeks with the July 4th holiday and some of the non-workdays and my secretary being out. And of course, we're having the meeting tonight, so I won't send anything out this Friday. If there's something critical, I'll probably just video it to you guys, information. But it's unlikely that the next two weeks, there'll be major things going on with the 4th holiday coming up to send out a packet on. Okay? That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. We will move to the I'm for committee reports and presentations.
Since he blew apart my House Bill 164 plan, there was more to that. The amendments, Section, House Bill 197 of the 133rd General Assembly and Section 7 of Senate Bill 216 of the 132nd General Assembly. All in that 164. As regards to the business expression regarding the intention under the third grade reading guarantee for 2021 school year to make changes in education laws for 2021 in school year response to definitions of COVID-19. Required Department of Education to make additional changes. This school year 2021, education to make additional, concern the city, local and residential schools and joint vocational schools. This experience for decreased and impactful value of district utility tangible personal property. And Senate Bill 330 was introduced. Part of the House Bill 166 of the 133rd General Assembly. New method of school financing for internet and computer-based community access. Was majority of students are enrolled in the drop-off intervention recovery program. And go along with the blended learning, I was reading a article, I can't find it now. They said that, of course, that had to be done by July 1st.
31st.
To be done by July 31st. Which is basically what we did for the last three months.
So yeah, in fact, Paul, that was actually pushed back to November 1st. And, and there's these two different things, blended learning and remote learning. And we've got two different terminologies. And so, so yeah, one is due officially by July 31st. It was initially due June 30th or before July 1st. But that one apparently has been pushed back now to give people more, more chance. But like I said, it's a simple one-page form. So we're submitting ours tomorrow before the June 30th deadline anyway. And then we'll have the other one done probably by around July 15th before the 31st deadline.
HR number 1351 resigned the paid teacher retirement system for celebrating the 100th anniversary of founding that. Senate Bill 327 deduce. Senate Bill 320 was, with the committee led by Senator Huffman, require public and private schools to decide whether to open instruction of 2021 school year for parent providing home education during the weather or building which they provide instruction and adequate safety measures. during weather or building which they provide instruction and adequate safety measures to address COVID nineteen for other public officials closing schools in the school year and declare any emergency. There's so much stuff changing daily, it's it's usually the same thing anymore.
And so to add to Paul, I think this is, I think this is going to be a bigger impact to the K-twelves as far as whether people come to school because they feel unsafe or what safety procedures. But Robert has been working diligently on our safety practices and stuff here. We have sprayed and cleaned our air handlers. We have purchased um thermometer like um um camera infrared thermometers that can read a group. Uh we are got mask and hand sanitizer. We're getting signage for our cafeteria. So wherever we can't come back to, uh we're purchasing a UV light that will be able to go in and kill the germs in a room. Um and then we'll be able to also use that should a kid come down with a fever in the middle of the day. You know, and we know they were in that room. We could move kids to another room and go in there and kill the germs in that room and spray and have it operational still during that day and not have to wait for like four-hour spray or something of that nature and stuff. So uh we have really invested um in the idea of this being a place of choice and making sure our parents and people understand that it's going to be a safe place to work and um and those type of things that said, like I said, and as we get closer to the reopening plan, we'll roll out all those procedures and things and make sure parents know all the safety precautions that we have taken in the building. And so Robert and his team has done a phenomenal job during COVID and this summer, making sure we're prepared to come back as much as we can with the Health Department's permission of what we're allowed to do.
I looked into the body scans that they say to take your temperature, they say each machine is sixty-six thousand dollars.
We did not pay sixty-six thousand dollars.
This is for the whole body scan to walk.
Oh, the body scanner, we didn't do that. This will take a picture of your head and even if you have a mask on or a helmet eye thing, it'll still be able to pinpoint an area on your face and take a temperature.
Um so under item five, top five topics for discussion.
I just want to make you aware of, one, I don't know when you typically look at your agenda or stuff of that nature. But nine A C was added today after we interviewed him at nine-thirty this morning. So we offered the job and accepted uh that position. That is for our technology department, uh IT tech. Uh so he's an as-needed contract uh for just fifteen fifty. Uh a young student just graduated, but out of all of them, John felt with his robotic knowledge and things that he had done with troubleshooting and robotic competition in his high school and stuff, that he had the most uh ability to come in and you do uh, and he wants to go to Marion Tech in the IT field. So we felt he was the best fit to kind of just do that basic tech um position for us. Yeah, as you can see attached to your agenda tonight, you can see the list of CTSO winners. My rough estimate and counting, and I will tell you that I was counting and found out some had like four names on the line. I didn't count it, you know? But my rough estimate put it around two-hundred-and-eighty-nine students, even during this COVID-impact year. Won award or got a state degree in Ag or did something and moved on or came in fourth place in HOSA or went to Nat, had a national event uh do virtual and placed or something in eighth place. So you can list, look at the laundry list of those names. Uh I think they're divided up by even school districts, uh programs and school districts. So uh but a a good showing of our students here for CTSO award winners.
Item five C, I needed your question having the package for the president's evaluation. I would like to sit back to me by July the fourteenth, so I have time to compile it for the twenty-second board meeting. But I always appreciate your comments because all that goes into the final report. If you're new in having done it before, if you have any questions, please contact me by email or tonight or however you'd like to do that, call me. Ready to do anything? Item D, um Superintendent's Evaluation Committee meeting. Trying to do that right now and getting the I'm going to be Matt and Chuck myself, Jim.
I think it was you, Alyssa. I think you couldn't do the last one January because of taxes or February because of taxes, but I think it was you.
Are we going to, so we're going to do your evaluation? And then were we going to be?
Typically, well, you you can always push it back if you want, but um but yes. It's up to you and if you want to push mine to August, I don't, I mean, I, we're we're both on multi-year contracts, you're not, you're not hurting anything by doing that.
All right, the contentious space support meeting on October the seventh, twenty twenty?
Correct, um that could be to vote on CD documents as well as maybe early site plan and all the type, or no, early site plan would be in September. So yeah, would that be at the regular board meeting? This is a special one just to put on people's radar for the whole project actually moving forward.
On that, we have Facilities and Grounds Committee special meeting to review um the design drawings on July thirteenth to six P M.
And that's the committee with the president as stated last time. And that will be going page by page through the drawings with the architect and uh showing where we're at with the DD and the estimate should be back around July tenth. So we'll know everything about the project there and if everything is solid, we will have a special meeting on the fifteenth to vote that and keep the project moving forward. Well, the thirteenth is, thirteenth is the review, the fifteenth is a special meeting, Chuck. So we need it, we need a time for that, Madam President. Full board on the fifteenth for a special meeting to vote on the plans, yes.
Is seventeen still work to desk for everybody? We'll do it at seven P M. The regular July board, we need July twenty-seventh, seventh at seven P M. If there's nothing further, we'll move on to item six, the vote, um the approval of the minutes, the motion and a second for the people that President's comments and running.
Mike Bloodlock?
Yes.
Manuel?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Sade?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Ryan Wright?
Yes.
And item eight, action items for consideration is recommended by the Fraser. The motion and expecting to bring item eight A through eight D to the floor for the extension and vote.
Are there any questions I can answer first? Hey, I took a look at the general fund forecast just today. We have processed the final pay, we paid all the benefits. I think we're going to be looking at carrying over about nine-hundred thousand dollars this year. We are just spending far less than budgeted, far less than anticipated on non-personnel expenses. March, June, it just adds up over four months of the year. So uh I think that for what it's worth, other than uh this will be a difficult year uh to make comparisons to future, but we'll always have to have an answer this society uh this week. On the agenda itself, item eight C, I have an advance going from the general fund to the purpose fund. That's a temporary loan that will be paid back next year when we receive our final purpose funding. Below that, you see uh various modifications, those all net out to zero. Just shifting some money in the general fund budget and it's prepared to close the books for the year. Item eight D is a net decrease to total appropriations of seventeen thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-three cents. Again, just uh polishing things up as we are moving closer to two thirty, close the book. Finally, A D would be our temporary appropriations for next school year. A total uh fifty million, even if it's sixty-six thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars, ninety-one cents. The vast majority of that being related to our bill.
Anyone have questions and comments, concerns? If nothing further, roll coffee.
Paul?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dunn? Mike Bloodlock?
Yes.
McNamal? Purcell?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Sade? Stanford? Page?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Yes.
Moving here, item nine, action items for consideration is recommended by the superintendent. I will take the motion and expect to bring items eight A through nine eighteen to the floor for discussion and vote.
Is there any questions on any of them that you have off the top of your head? Looking at them, um I think you can um see most of them are standard for this time of year, whether we're getting the new textbooks to start the following school year. Um we have our our one-year contracts in nine E, uh we have our extended days. Um we have our adult ed um process of of the people who work for the, for there for the next year. Hiring to start the school year off, I'm just trying to see our standard stipend approval with the nine M. Uh we did modify uh that from last year and no increase. But um we have kind of clarified new teacher, mentor and resident educator and um have made that to where it used to be new teacher mentor was seven-hundred-and-fifty. But we have some teachers who are new that don't have to do resident educator and some teachers who have to do the resident educator. So if you're mentoring a teacher, you'll get both the new teacher and the resident educator, so it'll still be seven-fifty. And then if you're mentoring a teacher who's coming with eleven years' experience and you're just getting them used to the district and some of those operations for the first year as a one-year mentor, it's five hundred dollars. So that was a adjustment change there um that we made uh for that. Cell phone stipends um are in there uh for everyone who gets those um. So I don't, I don't see if you have no other questions. I really don't see anything that stands out here. Uh our calendar or twenty-twenty-one, you voted on it once before in nine X, but we brought it back because we had got an extra workday for teachers based on doing uh innovation uh pilot with the state of Ohio. And we won't have that in that future year. It was a, uh we did, we got it for one year. Talked to the innovation grant people at O D E in a meeting about two weeks ago and they were like, we're not just doing it for PD anymore, so we didn't even apply this year. We'll still run it as it, as our last day uh of doing it, but for this future calendar, we wouldn't have that day available. So we we took that off and made that change uh to there. Nine Z was the blended learning model. As I said, I don't require board approval, but I'd just like to keep you informed. I would prefer it as we move forward that you know what we're doing. Nine A A is, y- you guys have probably all seen this. It's uh you're required to vote on approving the plan to move to OTES two point oh. Um some of your districts will be moving this year. Other districts are going to take the COVID exemption and wait one more year and get training. So we were all supposed to, as a minister, you're supposed to start getting the bridge training from moving from one point oh to two point oh last spring when COVID hit. And now they're just coming out with some of the online parts and stuff of that nature. In fact, Ms. Ramey has been taking it uh right now. Uh but we won't have all of our administrative team trained um at the beginning of the year to implement two point oh. So you see that in the motion that we're going to accept two point oh as part of our policies and moving forward. But for this school year, we'll still be using the one point oh model uh for evaluation. So I believe that is everything.
Yes.
Ryan Wright?
Yes.
Yes.
Chris, can you tell with the uh motion, do you believe will come out and have any work to follow after your? Yep, so I can tell the press, I can uh ask you to leave and we can have Kelsey text you if you want to get back on, if there's any information to follow afterwards. But I do also expect it to probably take some time, so it won't be quick as well. It won't um, it won't be major, we're not firing anybody or anything like that, so, but there might be some stuff to keep the project moving forward. That's the way to say it. Okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Kelsey, if you want to try to get ahold of Foster in case and if he has any questions. Okay, Kelsey, if you want to try to get a hold of Foster, in case, and if he has any questions. All the administrators have jumped off Foster, you're, Mr. Wolf, you're going to have to get off. I'm going to stop recording. Okay, we're, we're now recording.
So we're back in regular session, and our attorney, Chris Misowski, will read the motion for us, and then we'll.
Motion to approve amended and restated standard form of agreement. B133 between owner and architect with Freitag and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $2,455,549. Which reflects an amount of $110,414.50 for exhibit C. And additional insurance coverage in the amount of $60,000.
Motion in the second three? Questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.